Yes, ma'am. James.
Okay, I'd like to call the order to the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, September 26th, the order at 7:01 PM. I would like to remind folks, since we are starting to get audience back, nice for coming, to make sure that your cellphones are silenced, and also a reminder to the board members and the folks in the audience that these mics are very sensitive, so the shuffling of paper inside conversations get picked up very easily and can be distracting if you're listening online, so please try to keep it to a minimum. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We don't have those minutes, right, Mike? Okay.
No.
Okay. I know there was some discussion on them, but, okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public to make any comments about something that is not already on the agenda for this evening.
Susan Ainsley, Board of Trustees.
Thanks, Susan.
Well, laugh. I couldn't miss a meeting.
Carl Larso, I'm here as an observer for the community.
Hey, Carl.
And I'm Jerry, all Board of Trustees as well.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
By Pat, all in favor. Hi. Oh, I will also mention, yes, I will also mention that Jim is online tonight. He is a member of the planning board, but he is not a voting member tonight, so he is just observing, but he can obviously make comments and ask questions just like anybody else, so he just won't be a voting member tonight. Next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for the final plat of cluster subdivision proposal number 2021-4464 by Beer Properties LLC. Beer Properties LLC and Hunt Engineers are providing a final plat of a cluster subdivision for property parcel number 45.2-1-47.2, which consists of approximately 40 acres of vacant land located between Craft Road and Bush Lane. The final plat, along with details of proposed duplex lots, will be reviewed by the planning board, and I saw David just walk in, so hey, David, how are you? You couldn't get a seat in the front today? I know.
I just got enough to see if he couldn't. He hasn't got the room to join in with the right link, maybe Mike could.
Could you send him the link, Mike? I know there were two, and I don't know which one went out to folks. Michael sent it along that way, but, um, while you're doing that multitasking, Mike, did you want to just give us a quick update on where we were? I know there was going to be a meeting after the last planning board meeting, a discussion between Beer Properties and the DPW, and maybe Brent, too, so you can give us an update on that quick.
Yeah, I just sent stuff to Tim, so he should probably get on here.
Okay.
Um, yeah, since the last meeting, we had, when we left the last meeting, Ray and Natalie were going to work on conditions for resolution. At the same time, the gang of six are, which is easier than naming everybody, we got together for an engineer meeting and reviewed a few items that got sent back to Tim Steed. Brent was unable to make the meeting, but Brent sent over some ideas and some information that he wanted to see, and I passed that along, so I think, I think we all were on the same page as far as knowing what needed to be done. This, yesterday, David dropped off the changes that were made, and what I did was I sent it over to Dondy and John and Brent to review, to make sure we got everything all set. I have not heard back from John. He had yesterday off, and I think they had a couple water main breaks today, so I'm not sure he was able to review it, but I did want to have this meeting because Ray and Natalie had extensively gone through the conditions, and I wanted the planning board to take a look at that, see if we can at least take that step.
And I do see Tim is, Tim is just joining in now, so we'll give him a second to... Hey, Tim, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Uh, Mike was just giving us a quick update on the, on the work that happened between the last meeting and this meeting tonight. So I know one of the, one of the goals for tonight is to, we do have in front of us some draft conditions for the final plat approval, so we did want to go over those, Ray and Natalie?
Yep.
And then if there's other topics that need to be discussed tonight, we can talk about them, so I don't know, Mike, if you want to, if you want to kind of, if you want to pull these up on the screen for starters, and then if you want to, we can take it from the top and run down through them.
And I can just give some back history as to how these conditions came to be, so basically I reviewed prior larger subdivision conditions and looked at conditions that were applicable to this site, removed anything that I felt was inapplicable. Ray and I reviewed these on Friday, and I think we came to an agreement on almost all of them. Brent had some minor word changes to a few of them, which I haven't made to, made those changes yet, but they are substantive as much as just adding clarity on a few of them. And other than that, I have not gotten any feedback from anybody else on them.
Okay. Um, so yeah, Mike, I don't know if you want to go over every condition, or if there's ones that, there are specific questions or comments that you want to talk about, or, you know, same thing, Ray or David, anything in particular that you want to pull out?
Well, if any of the planning board members, when they looked this over, if they found anything in there that seems to be odd, or something that they don't understand, I bet it would be good to at least have Natalie and Ray explain what they are. I have gone over it, and it's contains just about everything that I could possibly think of. It's not going to be handled when it comes time to issue the site permit and the building permits. So it, whatever you want to do, Mike, you want to go down each one individually, or you just want to hit the ones that people don't understand, that'd be great also.
Yeah, I would say let's just hit the one, I know a lot of these are pretty standard, so I don't think we have to go over them, but if there's ones that people do have questions about, or want some clarity about, by all means, anyone on the board, or Ray, or David, feel free to, feel free to go ahead, listen.
I would disappoint you if I didn't have a question.
No, go ahead. I knew somebody.
I was, so I didn't understand what an offering plan is. Number three, an offering plan.
Is that the HOA will submit to New York State to be formed and recognized as an inlet?
Okay.
That's correct.
And then, the only thing I had is, is at one point in Forenson number 11, we said, Mike Scott will provide list of easements. Oh, did you mean the code officer will?
This is like a, so this is a working draft, so when Ray and I met, we hadn't had the updated plat, so we weren't sure which easements the village was going to take or not, so in speaking with Michael Scott prior to the meeting, he said, "I'll, I'll get you a list of the easements."
So this is just a note to us?
This is a note to me, really.
Because I was going to say, yeah, we don't, we don't want to use somebody's name.
11, 14.
14, yeah.
I think there's one other.
Because it was in italics, but I wasn't sure about number 11.
20 also is a.
Yes, the list, yes, all right.
The easements couldn't be identified just yet because there was some changes with the, with the final plat that would have changed, actually changed the easements.
Okay.
Also, Michael Scott is spelled wrong, so if we really wanted to.
I know.
Just say.
Michelle.
Draft, draft.
Draft.
It does say draft.
But I thought normally we don't use names because we never know tomorrow we'll bring, so we just use titles, so I just wanted to be sure.
That's a good, it's a good thing I don't have any feelings.
Exactly. Um, so the names of the streets have to be done also before.
Yeah, it looks like the Loop Road is unnamed.
Do we have names?
No, just says Loop Road and West Road, I don't know if that is a formal name.
I know, but what, I figure across that bridge when I get to it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to hear what you have in mind. I mean, Loop Road has a nice ring to it.
It kind of does, right? Yeah.
Could just leave it.
Oh, we can.
Other questions?
Nope, that's it for me. There, I rest, there was a lot of this that I have to say, I was trusting Ray and Natalie to come up with the right language.
Are the experts, after all.
And reference to.
Nothing for you, Pat, Lorraine, anything?
No, I'm good.
Jim, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. First of all, I, a lot of kudos to Natalie, because she took the lead in drafting these conditions, and we've tweaked here and there, but it primarily is her work, and well done. Secondly, just so we're aware, it is very comprehensive and it's standard. There is one issue, though, that I know Natalie and I agreed that, that we needed to run by you folks. We can come up with the language either way, but we need to know, we need to get some direction from you, and specifically it has to do with the, what to do about the, we call it the stub, the, that 150 piece of the streetway that's not street that would eventually connect to Lansing Trails 2. And I know there was discussion about it at the last meeting, I think that David, you know, we would prefer to dedicate, not, I'm not using the word dedicate properly, to give a permanent easement to the village, and then to allow and to grade it, but then to make it green space until there comes a time that it needs to be paved, if ever, depending on what happens to Lansing Trail 2. Our thought is that to pave it now would create basically 150-foot of macadam dead end that would eventually become unsightly, it would become an attractive nuisance, it's ecologically unsound, and that is an unnecessary use of fossil fuel, et cetera. So I think what we would like to do is to, and legally, we can set it up with an easement, a permanent easement now, and a guarantee that the HOA would underwrite the cost of extending that at the time, if and when the village ever calls upon the HOA to do that. So that's our preference, it was frankly, it's my idea, no blame this on David, I just feel from a, an environmental standpoint and from a common sense standpoint, that that's the way to proceed. So that's, that is an issue that the board, looking for some direction from the board.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll just give you a little bit of background of how we came up with this. After our last meeting, I wanted to kind of make sure that we closed up any open end on, on any questions that we had, and this stub road was one of the questions, or one of the open-ended questions. So I went up to John Courtney, and I said, "Look, let's, let's come up with some type of solution for this. What's going to be, what's going to be best here for what you think is going to be best for everyone?" And as John and I discussed it more, we've kind of decided that going, going ahead and paving it during the Phase 2 operation would be best for both parties, and our logic was to pave it at the time when they're already set up to pave the Loop Road would cost David less money at that point, and also the cost of the asphalt, when he does that, will probably be substantially less than it would be maybe 10 years from now. Who knows what the cost of asphalt is going to be at that point? As far as unsightly or whatnot, it's the, the village is going to be responsible for that. If it's not done, well, let's put it this way, if nothing is done there, they're going to have to mow it all during the summer, which is going to add to, you know, the already overloaded work that the DPW has to do. If only the base is put on, then you're going to end up having some unsightly weeds, and it's going to have to be weed eat, you're going to have to weed eat it constantly. With it being blacktop, I'm not saying that that's the best solution, I just thought it would be the best for both parties financially, and also, I mean, the aesthetics, one way or another, who knows? It would be an advantage if we did get a large snowstorm, they would have someplace to put the snow. So these are the topics that John and I discussed in coming up with this conclusion.
Okay. Thoughts from the board members?
So, as I understand it, John Courtney is suggesting to pave it at the time. One of the things that always worries me, if you don't do it at the time, is that people get so used to it not being there, and then when it comes time to make the connection, everybody's surprised and upset, when in fact it was always the plan all along, because I've seen that happen, where, you know, the connection was intended, and then it's, you know, it gets delayed and delayed for whatever reason, and then people just say, "Well, we like it the way it is," and, but, you know, can't be. So that's my only concern. I don't have strong feelings about it. I guess I would defer to what John says about, yeah, the snow thing is always an issue. I know that.
Yeah, I know there was quite a bit of discussion, too, about just, right, so John's the expert when it comes to, comes to roads in the, in the village here, none of us are, none of us know much about it, but I know John came and presented to one of the, one of the meetings about this, specifically about the road, when we were talking about, you know, the radius of the turns and things like that, and the release of snow from the plow, and I think Brent commented on it, too, so I think, you know, my, my preference would be, A, to, you know, we asked, we asked everyone to go back and talk to John, he is the expert here in the village, and he's the one that's going to be responsible for maintaining it one way or the other. His recommendation was to pave it. I think that, I think we should listen to him, and I think it also does kind of button up this project, it doesn't leave, you know, some outstanding thing that we're going to have to keep revisiting year after year. I know that we've done that before in the past, and it's kind of come back to, and I'm not suggesting that it would here, but it's always something that's looming over the village, and it's something that has come back to cause issues with other projects in the past, so I would, you know, my suggestion would be that we, you know, listen to John's advice.
I was wondering, though, David, if, what you think of this other proposal, was this something that you would like to see not paved it? I don't know, just would like to hear what you have to say.
That's, that's my preference, as, as Ray mentioned.
Okay.
But, you know, frankly, you know, John and I actually had a phone discussion today about it, and, you know, he's adamant that it's in the village's best interest. I'm skeptical of that, but, you know, I'm not, I don't want to hold this up anymore.
Pat or Lorraine?
I would defer to John.
Yeah, I agree.
Jim, any, any comments you wanted to make?
No. Yep, excuse me. Yes, I would defer to John as well, he's, as you pointed out, he's more familiar with how to deal with roads, and it was pertaining to roads.
Natalie, any?
I would just point out that this is not an atypical feature in that area to have a stump road that is paved over with no connection to it. I was just up in that area last week, and I noticed at least two.
Right.
So I don't think it's an atypical feature, and I don't think it's affected property values or become, they weren't unsightly to me as I drove by them.
I think, just kind of, not that there's any evidence of it either, but I think, you know, things of the other phases of Lansing Trails are moving along pretty rapidly in that area, too. I wouldn't, you know, from, from the progress that they've made in the other direction, knowing that this would be the next place that they develop, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, they move down that way, and infrastructure's put in a lot sooner than 10 years.
And actually, it looks like there's something happening.
Yeah, well, there was something going on to the very first original townhouses, but it looked like it might have been water main or something. I wasn't, because I went to the post office today, and I noticed that, so it looked, and it was on both sides, and I thought, oh, but it didn't, I think it was more of correction to something, maybe, or maybe it was a water.
Full front of all of them.
Mike Scott's hand, so you can just tell us, I'm sure.
No, it's, all that is, is it's got nothing to do with Lansing Trails, the potential Lansing Trails 3, that's basically their bearing and culvert all through there to put the stormwater underground instead of on the surface.
Okay. Did you have your hand up, Ray?
Yeah, no, I just, I think, I think the, the board has been pretty clear about where the consensus is, so we're not going to beat this one to death, we just, we, we wanted to get some direction, and we really appreciate the, the direction that you provided, and we'll go ahead and pave it, so I think, I think as David has said, we, we are more interested in bringing this to closure as quickly as possible, so if all the other conditions seem to be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just mention what, I mean, Brent suggested, just clarifying in four, five, and six, who is responsible for certifying that compliance? Mike, I would assume that's you. Mike Scott?
Yep.
So we'll add that language, and just if the code officer will certify that four, five, and six have been completed. And in number 19, Brent recommended, I believe it's the third line down, not limited to filing of a notice of intent. Brent just suggested adding of intent, so I believe those are the only changes that you suggested, Brent, and then we can add in the easement list once we get those from Mike Scott.
That's, that's fine.
Great.
All right, we're, we've got our marching orders, and, I think whenever, when is the next meeting?
Two.
Two, yeah, two weeks.
October, what, 11th?
9th.
9th?
There you go.
10/9.
That's a, I think that's a holiday.
Yes.
It isn't for us, not, never is for us.
It happened with us last year, Ray, that you were surprised we had a meeting on this day.
We always meet on this day.
So we have been talking about it for a year, too.
The 30th, though, is the one that we canceled.
31st.
31st, rather, excuse me, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that meeting tonight, if we really think it's absolutely necessary to continue forward, whether we maybe could, as long as we're not voting things for the 31st, or has it already been canceled?
Oh, you want to have me on Halloween?
I don't care.
We can talk about it later.
No, I know, it's children, I don't care. I get, you're older, I.
We'll discuss.
We can talk about it under.
I was saying, if it was really urgent.
Okay.
Yeah, we can talk about it under other business, yeah. Okay, but yeah, Ray, Ray and David, I think, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Again, Brent's got his hand up. Oh, Brent, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Natalie, is, those are the comments that I had on the conditions, but I had a couple questions that maybe, I guess what I was trying to do is think about my comments relative to the drawing as a filed plat, not, or not talking about approving all of the engineering details of water mains and sewer pipes and all that kind of thing, but that, there's a couple things, I think I had, I don't have it in front of me, but I think there was three things that I might have commented on, and I, I was looking for some feedback. Off the top of my head, one of them was that I know that Dondy and John had a good point that there didn't seem to be any provision for a drainage easement behind the backs of lots T1 through T8, and Tim has added a note about adding, putting a drainage easement there, but my question is, does that mean that we're going to end up having a drainage, a legal easement agreement between the village and each one of those T1 through T8 property owners?
What I envisioned it would look like is that we would get that easement now, and it would just run with the title to those, this is not going to be subdivided up, so you're not going to need to get one from each individual owner of those properties, but there will be one on the backside of those properties.
That's correct.
Wait, I guess, I was under the impression that these are all going to be owned by?
If these will all, then, yeah, we won't need to go to like T1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 to get an easement, it'll run with the title of these parcels, so that, it'll just be in place.
Oh, right, okay, okay.
Right, okay. And then, so my next, thank you for that clarification, my next question had to do with whether or not it was critical that, since there has been a wetlands delineation, that is it important that people be made aware of what is wetlands on the subdivision plat, and such that, in my, my comment comes from experience, especially in Lansing Trails 1, where we had some wetlands that were, became transferred as part of the, the title to some of the lots, and people did not respect it, or did not even really understand or know that there was wetlands in the neighborhood, and they, they destroyed wetlands, and, you know, although it was in small quantities, it would be something, I guess my question is, is do, do prospective buyers need to be notified that there's wetlands in their neighborhood?
Most, I was, that's, I guess what I wasn't getting at, is, was my understanding, these are not going to be sold, but I suppose that could change at any point.
Well, it's a subdivision plat, so even though Mr. Beer may not intend to, there's nothing that would change, there's nothing that would prohibit that from changing sometime years down the road.
So just want, you want the, all the wetlands identified?
It's a question, I'm not, I'm not saying it has to be, but it.
There aren't any, are there? I didn't, I don't know where they lie to know how prevailing the area.
Yeah, do you remember where they were, Brent?
This is Tim.
Go ahead, Tim.
Brent's.
Oh, boy.
But, Brent's.
You're breaking up, Tim.
Wetland delineations do have, okay, wetland delineations do have sunset clause or expiration periods, so if we add a wetland delineation, it's not saying that that same wetland delineation would be observed, observed by a regulatory agency five, 10, 20 years from now, and so there are some complications with adding current wetland delineations to a perpetual subdivision map. But we can add them, we know those wetland delineations.
Well, I think at one, at one time, Tim, we, we had a, we had a draft plat that had noted on there, so it might be just a matter of putting it on the final plat.
I thought originally we did.
Yeah, definitely originally, I know David presented something.
Yeah, and we can, we can.
Oh, yeah, I know, David, you had work done, and it was, it was definitely on one of the maps that you provided with us, so that information's got to be somewhere.
I thought. We do have it.
Okay, okay. So I don't know how we've, how this has been handled before in the past.
I don't recall seeing anything about wetlands on other subdivisions, though I don't know that wetlands affected other subdivisions.
Okay.
So I don't think there's precedent either way.
I think that we've have, have either intentionally not included them in the past, or inadvertently not included them in the past, and I feel like that, I feel like that leads people to not, if, if they're significant, sometimes that when you transfer title to individual property owners, they tend to just not know what a wetland is, or that they're near a wetland, and that they have some kind of obligation to, you know, not destroy those wetlands.
Well, I think kind of to, you know, to the point about how they can change over time, obviously, wouldn't that be something, you know, be something that comes up, you know, if one of them is going to be, you know, sold, I don't know what the process for that normally is.
It's not, it's not anything that I've dealt with in my real estate practice that I either have to notify or note wetlands in a sale or purchase, though.
Wasn't it, wasn't there something, Brent, maybe you remember, originally, I remember you saying that you wanted to hear from the Army Corps, or there was something about that, David, probably you remember where.
No, I, I know what the, I know what the comment was, it was that in some of the earlier versions of the layout, there was, there was some lots that were proposed to be impacting on wetlands, and, and I think in response to my comments or concerns, I think Tim did make revisions to the lot line layout, so that avoided the conflict between individual lots, so that, Tim, maybe you can confirm that, to my recollection of the last version, that you now have no wetlands, all of the wetlands are on HOA property, and none are actually on, none of the lots are on any of the wetlands.
Yeah, Brent, we tried to eliminate those conflicts.
Yeah.
And address that.
I remember.
Correct.
So if they're not on.
Right, so if, right, so if, if the lot lines were adjusted so that they're not infringing on any of the wetlands, does that then address the concern where a lot might be sold instead of being rented, and then if it's already not impacting wetlands, the sale of that piece of property or that parcel also would not impact wetlands?
Yeah, I guess you're just notifying them the sheer proximity to a wetland, but.
That's kind of what I'm recalling, is that.
That's kind of what I'm recalling, is that that came up, and so there were revisions made to pull back. It was kind of the north part of the Loop Road, where, and I thought that was kind of addressed already, but.
Yeah, it was, and, and so my, as I stated, my, my comment is a question, not a, you know, a request or demand. It's just kind of, I'm just thinking out loud here that we've, I just don't want to do this and then think a couple of years later, darn, I wish we had a thought of it.
Well, it could happen.
Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, just, just so you're aware, part of the HOA offering plan will identify the lands that the HOA will be responsible for, which would include those wetlands. So there will be some level of notice to all property owners, whether or not, no, no property owners is actually going to buy a lot that has wetland on it. But they will all be buying into the HOA, and therefore they will have that notice.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I just, I just wanted to bring it up and make sure we weren't overlooking something there.
Yeah.
And then I did.
Go ahead, Brent.
I did have one other technical question, but it, it's kind of impacts the potential plat because it might possibly need another easement. Tim, I noticed that the stream crossing on the leg of the road headed towards Milkcroft doesn't have a easement identified for the, for the culvert pipe. Where all of the other cross.
Add a head wall and.
What a tea second.
Yeah, we, we tried to eliminate the need for that through grading and head walls.
Okay, sounds good. I like, I like that.
That will be a tough easement to get.
I like that, okay. That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was everything I had on my list, I, I don't have it in front of me, but that was what my.
I have it, I mean, if, there's a few things that, on the list that weren't mentioned, if you just want to, maybe they have been taken care of. You said the only trail on the map is the official village trail that would be dedicated to the village for future maintenance, I believe it is.
Yeah, just, it was just a question that, because the, the trails, what's on the map has kind of been fluid as far as trails, and I think we, we've all wanted to boil it down to the only one that we really, and I think they correctly identified that the only one that is important as far as the conveyance is the one that the village is going to maintain.
Right.
And then you had a question as to all the drainage easements around Lot 1.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand what the need for that was, I don't object to it, but I just didn't quite understand it.
That was there.
Okay, good.
I'll, I'll get, I'll get some answers for you on that, Brent, because some of that we did go over in that meeting, and it may not have been, I may not have translated it to you correctly, so I'll get those, get that information to you.
Okay. Sounds good.
And Brent, I. Can't answer any of those.
I can't hear.
Yeah, yeah, he's, Tim's breaking up. Tim, if you do, if you do have questions, you know, get, I would, I would get together with Brent, you guys can get them answered.
I think that's what he was saying.
Okay. Okay. Ray, any, anything else for you?
No, nothing from us, we're good.
Good, David, okay, cool, we appreciate it, we'll plan on seeing you all at the, at the next meeting, and we'll get you on the agenda.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Cool, thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda is to open a public hearing for requested amendment to special permit number 2021-4516. Eric Gatzman has requested an amendment to the conditions of the approved resolution for special permit number 2021-4516. Planning board has determined the request to be a major change, therefore requiring a public hearing, so I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lorraine, all in favor? Okay. Did you want to start us off, Michael, or, no, Eric's here, if, if you want to step up, Eric, and sure.
So I'm just going to go back to my previous letter asking the board to maintain the special permit that we have, to keep it open, so we keep construction moving along. As I stated before, you know, we, we were stopped because of the litigation in place. It makes it very difficult to move forward, you know, we were unable to subdivide this property when we tried a few years ago. Had we been able to do that, we would have broken a portion of this off, and we wouldn't be in this position, but we have one parcel, so it's all entitled. We're moving through that, as soon as we get through, we'd like to get it done, and I think just it's important that the board understands that contractors will keep us on their radar, you know, as long as we keep them abreast of, we start getting closer to something that, you know, especially more towards the springtime, they start filling up. But if we don't have an active permit, they really don't take us serious until we actually come back and turn it on again. So I'm not sure what it does to expose the board to keep it open, it's the exact same permit we had before. You know, as I said, we've got the two open buildings there to, you know, to finish the whole community we built. And as I said before, we have a number of residents who enjoy living there, and they've got to get to know each other, and you asked me if someone would come and see some of our residents in the, in the audience here, so maybe let them speak on it, versus myself, if you don't mind.
Public hearing.
By all means, anybody who wants to.
Just guys roll this over?
Uh, no, it's attached, but if, if you can make it up, yeah, if not, if not, you can speak up, and we should be able to hear you.
Hi, my name is Peggy Greco, and my husband and I are one of the residences in Blue Heron Way, and we're joined by some of the other tenants. And there really isn't a lot of relatively affordable housing for seniors in the area, which makes Blue Heron Way really unique. And they're beautiful properties, they're largely handicap accessible, the maintenance has been great. They provide handicap aids for people that live there, and the people that live there are kind of becoming a little community. And what we'd really like to see is there's big open space there. We'd like to see the last two buildings build in, so that our little community could, you know, be completed.
Did anybody, anybody else who's from the, from the community want to say something? I know that you've referenced some of them, but anybody else, feel free, you don't have to if you don't want to, but feel free.
Hi, my name is Jean Merenstein, my wife Michelle and I live in 32 Blue Heron Way, and I would largely like to echo the previous comments. It, it's tough to find high-quality, reasonable housing for seniors. I think Eric has done an excellent job of providing that, it's very high-quality construction, it's very low maintenance, we are very pleased to be there. And we have become a community in the short time that it's taken to fill it up. And we would look forward to seeing the rest of our little community completed. Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm Dorothy Turner, I live in 24 Blue Heron Way, I moved in in February. I had a house in Groton, but I could not maintain the ground any longer. I'm 77, so I really appreciate the grass being taken care of and the snow. And Derek, our maintenance person, is wonderful, if something goes wrong, he's there within 24 hours. I also feel safe there. You know, there's some places you just don't, but it's safe, there's never a problem or anything going on in the area. And it's very convenient. I like it, and I'd like to have more neighbors.
Great, thank you. Okay. Yeah, by all means, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think one, one thing that we're finding that people are coming to look at these are people like Dorothy, who are outside the village. And our original plan for doing this was to make a walking community in the village, because you're next door to the YMCA, you're next door to Target, you're next door to BJ's. These are all basically grocery stores, and Tops, and Aldi, and everything else. One thing, and I'd like to ask, and it does take time to do this, as you're aware, what I would ask the board is, if we could keep this open, so I could focus on some other things. You know, I stopped leasing here five or six years ago, and there hasn't been a whole lot that's been brought to the village since that point, I'm talking the retail restaurant side. You know, I, I was able to bring in the BJ's wholesale, of the Target, the Regal Theater, Michael's, Best Buy, Dick's. I was involved in leasing all those, permitting those with you, building those. And I recently, with this being down, unable to do anything on these buildings, I've started talking to restaurants again, you know, we've got two parcels on Tri-Panama Road. We have restaurants and a coffee shop, and some other things that we'd like to bring here. And during this time, while we're waiting for this, and it's also the amenities for the neighbors to walk to them. That was the whole purpose of that, purchasing those parcels to bring this whole thing full circle. I've had more time to do that, I've been out contacting, we're trying to set site tours up for people. And that would give me the ability to focus on this, until we get through this hopeless litigation in spring, we can turn this back on again to finish the community. So I would ask, you know, I, I understand there is frustration, it's been some time to get this thing done. It's just difficult to keep coming back and all these trying to stuff. So I'd ask the board to seriously just consider if we could keep these open. Let me try and bring some other things, the restaurants, and that's, that's probably what I do have a commercial. They've built houses before, as you know, has have been a very successful run at that. But they're built, and I think we've got people in the community who appreciate it, we've got people outside the village who like to move here. And it's a single level, the two-car garage, one-car garage, is all done for a reason. And I think I wouldn't change anything in those, because I think it's exactly what I wanted to accomplish here. So I would like to finish the other billions, it's just the hands are somewhat tied right now.
There's probably questions, if you don't mind, sticking around up here, just so, just so to get to answer. No, I mean questions from the board. Okay, no. Can you, can you, can you give us an update, I know it's been a couple of meetings since you were here last, in front of the board, can you give us any updates on where you are with litigation and things like that?
We're going through more, we're going through a whole bunch of information on both sides, they're, you know, still collecting a lot of the information, I'm not sure the legal side.
Still in discovery.
Yeah, still in discovery, so it's been quite a bit, and some things have been extended to bring more information in. It's gone out to a lot of different people, everybody who is involved in the different processes, so it's, it's quite a bit of information. I mean, when you go back through everything, I mean, you guys never saw all of our documents and everything else, it's pretty clear what was allowed, what wasn't allowed. So I'm not sure why we're in this position, but we are.
I know one of the other questions a few meetings ago was finishing up the outstanding conditions for first phase, and I know Mike, I don't know if you've been in touch with Mike, but I know Mike had a, had a list of them, I don't know if they're all done or not, or if Mike, if you want to share some of, some of that information about what's still outstanding, to finish up Phase 1?
Yeah, I can go through what I have, each one of the buildings that are there has a temporary CFC, and that's mainly because we can't close those out, the, the site plan needs to be closed out. And the site plan really can't get closed out until Phase 2 is done. At that point, the SWIP can actually be closed, and the whole process can be done. Couple other items are still open, I mean, there's still a sewer and a sidewalk easement that needs to be recorded. I don't, I don't believe the landscaping for that building too, there's still a tree or so missing. And then John had a, a small list. There was a couple of height problems with a manhole or two. And then also, John has noticed that there is a section of sidewalk that is starting to deteriorate on the surface. So those are some, some issues that Eric needs to get in contact with John Courtney about, and get those things solved.
So none of, none of those things, though, other than obviously, we, the SWIP can't be closed out until Phase 2 is done, which, I mean, that's, you know, an issue right now, but those other things aren't insurmountable, I assume?
I believe Peter has been in touch with your attorney regarding easements, Peter is handling those two documents, so.
The sewer and sidewalk?
Yeah.
He, he gave us the comments, I had those updates, I tried to meet with John on Friday, but he was off, which I forgot. We tried yesterday, he was off, and he was going to try today, but I know he was, I think he had.
A cup of water, maybe, right, yeah.
Hear back from him, but I think the, they've been marked up, so we'll keep moving forward with those. We had the trees, there was one open, he's with the trees down next to number two, those were planted and everything else. So I think we've, we've tried to accomplish everything we can, short of the construction piece of it.
Other questions from board members?
Eric, would you consider, you know, the stones that are left there in the empty lot, would you consider removing those over the, for the next year and a half, or whatever it might take?
Yeah, I get.
So that somebody, I mean, if, if kids are coming to visit or anything, I just, not only is it on site, like, and clearly, I've been, you know, I drive by often, and people are taking great pride in their yards, and there's lots of flowers, and it's wonderful to see, but, you know, that sort of stands out to me. The only other concern that I have, honestly, is, we too, of course, want these buildings done as soon as possible, you know that. There is not enough parking for guests, and I'm wondering if there's something that you could think about. I notice that often there's people who park in the grass on the, because there's no other way for them to park, and they do it so that safely, and somebody could get through if necessary for safety reasons, but it's obviously an issue. And I'm just wondering whether you could give some thought to what might do, because that will only get worse if, with two more buildings.
Right, we have, we have the pad there, it's the stones down, so that one's used for additional parking, but we, we'll look into that and see.
Well, and I wonder, so there's, and I'll, I'll give other people a chance too, but I'm, I, I would say one thing to consider, and this is kind of a question for you too, Eric, is, we're obviously not going to make a decision tonight, we always keep these open for at least two public hearings, so, you know, sometimes more, depending on the discussion that goes. But because of the review, and because of, you know, classifying this a major change, going back through the process, those are items that we could put on as, you know, additional conditions.
Yeah, we could come up with a solution.
Right, if we could come up with a solution, that could be a condition on, on amended permit, if, if that's something that we feel we need, and something that, you know, Eric's open to. Pat or Lorraine or Jim, questions for Eric?
Yes, the one other thing, would you consider street trees along the sidewalk?
Street trees along the sidewalk?
Shade for along the sidewalk.
Planting trees up front.
Trying to, no, I'm trying to, we have planted there.
Pardon me?
I'm trying to think of the sidewalks.
There's nothing planted.
No, we raised the whole thing, and we got the, the storm going through there.
Is that along Oak Crest, you said?
Yeah, the, the Oak Crest sidewalk.
Down Oak Crest. Yeah, we really, we haven't thought about that, we tried to keep it open.
For?
Just we kept the whole thing open there, at least.
Okay.
Maybe something to consider.
It's just, it's something that, you know, I'm interested in that, I have always been interested in that. And so I'm keeping that in thoughts.
Yeah, it's there, yeah, okay. Okay.
Lisa, are you referring to street trees in the strip between the sidewalk and the pavement?
No, I'm considering street trees on his own property.
On the other side.
On the other side. On the, on the non-street side. I guess it's the south side of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Shade for walkers eventually, is what I'm thinking.
Some privacy.
Well, it would be pretty.
Yeah, it would look nice.
Did you have any comments or questions for Eric, or? I think Jim, Jim shook his head no, so, okay. So, I don't know if there's anything that we need from Eric, or not, I would say those outstanding conditions that can be completed for Phase 1, regardless of this, really do need to get done.
Yes, I agree.
I think.
They've been lingering for a while now, and, so I would, I would, can I would, I would connect to, you may have just joined in. I would, you know, connect with Mike and, and.
John.
And John, and whomever else needs to be involved on the legal side too.
Yeah, Peter.
Get easements done and finished, so those can.
Finally, they've been hanging out there a long time, for whatever reasons, both sides, I think.
Yeah, both sides.
Both sides, but it's just time to get rid of.
I think, I think we're close, I don't know, I think we're really close, and we have, we, we're just waiting for a document, so we can review. But I think we've got the plans, I think ties to us, that we're in pretty good shape with that.
And then for the.
I think we're a lot closer with that piece.
Okay, and then for the board members, think about, obviously, you know, think about, you know, thoughts on amendment of special permit, and if, if we do decide to do that, if there are conditions that you want to add on to, on to that amendment special permit, if we decide to move forward. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Eric? Okay, we appreciate you coming, and everybody from the community down there, it's nice to see people from down there too, so, thank you. Feel free to come to any planning board meetings, whether or not we're talking about down there too, you're very close, just up the road. Like Eric said, it's walkable. Or you can join on Zoom too, it's fine. But we appreciate you all being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a presentation of a proposed PDA. Alexandra Mergold will be presenting a proposed PDA for the development of 20 Bo Max Road, tax parcel number forty-four. Tax parcel number forty point, forty one, forty five, sorry. Point one dash one dash fifty one point thirteen. The planning board will review the presentation and discuss any needed information for a developers conference and public hearings. I know Alex isn't feeling well, so thank you for, thank you for joining us tonight. A, thank you for not, not coming and keeping your illness away from all of us.
Mike is raising his hand.
Oh, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
No, I just, I didn't want to interrupt your introduction of Alex. But, so go ahead and finish what you're doing, Mike. I just.
No, that was, that was it. Thanks, thanks for joining us and not getting us lost there.
Well, I appreciate the flexibility here. I mean, I'm wondering, you have the presentation, oh, Mike, go ahead.
No, I just, I just, before you get going on everything else, I just, the planning board, this group of people for, with the exception of possibly Brett and Lisa have never gone through a PDA before. And I kind of wanted to give a little bit of an overview of what we're actually looking at. In front of you, I gave you basically the objectives of a PDA. And what, what we're actually looking for as far as the village is concerned. And the other item I left you there was the, the items that are needed for a preliminary proposal. Now, Alex met, most of these items have been checked off when he gave his introduction to the Board of Trustees, but I want you to be aware of all of this as Alex gives his presentation. Because ultimately our goal here is to make sure that we have enough information so that we can get to a developers conference and get into the finite parts of these, of this project. So it, it, there's no real cutoff as far as what can be asked and what can't be asked. But if it's a question that for what color is the wallpaper? I mean, we'll get into that. I mean, we're not going to get into that, but you know what I'm talking about. Items that are specific, we're going to keep that until, we will hold that until developers conference. So like I said, I just wanted to, none of us have been through this, so I want to make sure that you had some type of guidelines to go by. But by all means, ask the questions. As, as long as I've known Alex, he's always been very prepared for items. The last, the last item I have for you is the full environmental assessment form, which does check off number three of the preliminary proposal items that are needed. So I just kind of wanted to give you a little introductory of what this is all about. As far as the details, there's items like that. I'll leave that to Alex.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Well, I guess I'll share my screen so that we can follow along. Do you see, do you see my screen? I guess you do, right? So I mean, here's the overall view. I guess I can start with what you have in front of you. I'll go through that quickly. So, well, we're proposing to convert the Transact Factory building into essentially residential development. And the idea is to use the existing footprint and the existing perimeter wall as essentially the kind of, the, the building, the new building perimeter. So here is the kind of an overall view of this whole thing. So in red is the existing factory. The middle is what we're proposing as a parking deck and a terrace on top. And the two additional buildings end up having their back walls as the portion of the transact wall. So the perimeter kind of goes in and then back out. But essentially, the idea is to kind of disturb as little as possible, but at the same time create, you know, just sort of fairly dense residential community. And the idea is also that each of these buildings, I guess I can kind of go. I mean, but well, here, here's a, some, some of the existing examples, obviously, you know, as local residents, you don't need to necessarily be taught all that. Here's kind of what it might look like from, from the aerial view. And the idea is, as I described, so here's the existing condition, the Transact Building. Here's what the ground level might look like. The idea is essentially we're creating six fairly distinct building blocks. One, two, three, four, five and six. And the idea is that each one of those blocks has a kind of a slightly different kind of living condition within it. So for example, this one that has this little muse in the middle might be a kind of maybe slightly more, well, sort of slightly more isolated, slightly more introverted. Maybe it's a senior living condition. Whereas, you know, something like this might be more sort of family oriented, slightly bigger one and so on and so forth. Like I said, we, we haven't designed every single sort of nut and bolt in the screw by any means. But the, the, the kind of overall idea is that to create a viable community, you want to have some kind of diversity, both in terms of kind of where people come from, but also age and family situation. And then the, the kind of, the big part of the proposal is the idea that the, the south end is sort of as open and as green as possible. And the idea is to create some kind of public communities there, like even talking about a pool and potentially various sporting courts. The existing drive remains and the existing parking lot essentially kind of sets up the, the parking condition. And then we sort of wrap around the building and then create this covered parking deck. Second level, you start seeing this open terrace. So there's some of the views. I can show you the 3D model, which is maybe a little more developed at this point. But for example, this is the view from the sort of south playground toward the building. This is the view from the main drive down. Some of the building elevations, again, they're sort of similar to what the, the muse already told you. Building section, we're kind of talking about two different possibilities and they have to do a lot with the potential cost implications, which we're trying to figure out. Whether we create a double level parking or a single level parking. And like I said, this is something we're kind of still trying to figure out. Given that there is a slight slope toward the, the west, I think we may be able to take advantage of that. But anyway, so the, here's a kind of the existing elevation as an example. And here's a kind of proposal where we're keeping the existing utility brick and we're kind of adding the sort of several of these terrace levels on top. Here is this kind of muse that I talked about and you see part of the parking deck and beyond. Here's a view down the main drive. You see these kind of individual apartments and terraces on top. And here's the inside terrace that, that is over the parking deck. So that's the presentation that you have. Like I said, I also have the 3D model here that you can, I mean, it may be easier to kind of see what I'm talking about. So this is Beaumont Drive right here. This is the existing retaining pond. This is the existing drive. So we are essentially, this is kind of how you enter into the space. And so this is that kind of full mini courtyard and this is the bigger courtyard on top, the bigger terrace. So anyway, so that's the, the kind of the, in a nutshell, this is what it is. We're, we're looking at somewhere roughly between two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty units. It really depends on kind of the, the sort of the development of their structural plans. But this is what the parking allows us, if we're taking into account one and a half parking spaces and also some guest spaces. And the idea is that there is a kind of a healthy mix of unit types, you know, like one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, where we have a couple of four bedrooms potentially. So that's, like I said, in a nutshell, that's the idea. There is also, I mean, I mentioned it last time. And those of you might remember, the idea is we're trying to see if we can create a building that is essentially a four-story condition. Most of the time, except here on the west end, where it's a three-story thing as a kind of a nod to the sort of residential zone there. They're sort of slightly, you know, they're on, on, on similar scale at that point. But in principle, that's the, that's the proposal so far. So I'm happy to entertain questions and comments and whatever else. I mean, I understand just a kind of a preamble that we're going to need to do several studies related to sewer and water and whatever other things. I'm, I'm hoping to get a kind of a sense from you what exactly those studies should be and what we should go after so that we can sort of begin those things as soon as possible. And again, anything else that we should focus on, we're happy to, to discuss. This is by sort of no means set in stone. As you can see, it's a very preliminary design. There's, you know, there's only kind of a broad strokes understanding of the kind of the bulk of the building, buildings. And the unit count that sort of makes it work financially for the developer. And also the, the parking count and the kind of overall sort of balance of disturbed versus undisturbed area. But anyway, so this is, this is it in a nutshell.
Okay. Questions from members on the board, things they want to know, again, keep at high level. I know that, you know, he touched on some questions we already had around units, bedrooms, things like that. Also keep in mind that it is very early on, so there's certain things he's not going to know. So you can ask him if he says, I don't know, he doesn't know. Or maybe he does know and he'll say, oh, I know.
So, so I think I brought this up last time also, Alexander, was about, it's considered, is it a percentage of it is hoped, hoped or will be workforce housing or is all of it?
Well, again, that, hello, sorry, you just. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry, because it looks like it broke off. Well, again, that's something we are sort of open to discussion. The, the idea in principle, it's a workforce, workforce housing. But also just hearing the previous discussions about the, the kind of senior living. I, my personal point of view is that it should really be a kind of a mixed community. And that's what we've designed so far. Like I said, there is like essentially six building blocks and they're all slightly distinct in their composition and their kind of look and feel.
Well, okay.
I mean, if you, if you, if you're asking me exactly what is the percentage of what versus what, I, I don't know yet.
Yeah, I think that's more for.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the, the general question of it's, you know, a mix of workforce and other housing.
What is the other housing? Is it affordable housing or is it, you know, market rate housing?
Senior housing or whatever.
Senior housing.
Well, I think that's what he was saying.
I think it's a mix.
Mix of all of those is what I heard him to say.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the goal is, is that it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a mix of sort of various different things, with the workforce housing being probably the major part. But the exact percentage of the exact kind of mix is yet unknown to be.
Okay.
I think that's, you know, developer conference, that's when we.
Yeah.
Can discuss our desires for.
I, I think the only comments I've gotten from people, very few, mind you, but a couple of people that are concerned about maintaining a lot of the trees that are already there, which I, I think you mentioned at one point in one of your presentations. So I think also the whole buffering between East Point and your facility. I think East Point could do a better job of doing some buffering on their side as well, by the way. I don't think they did, they kept in mind that maybe something might change in the future. So, but I would, I think the fact that you mentioned the height change on that west side, I think you're sensitive to that already. But just do keep that in mind. It's something that's come up more than once in conversations with folks.
Yeah, I'm sure. Speaking of the trees, I mean, the majority of the tree, from my observation now on the kind of south end, which is essentially kind of a green area, and that's what we're trying to keep as undisturbed as possible. Like I said, we're showing some sort of various kind of sporting facilities, but the idea is to try to kind of weave them within the existing trees that still have a kind of a life in them. So again, the, the whole point is to maintain the trees both as a kind of source of oxygen, but also as a kind of visual buffer between the various properties.
Alex, have you, do you have some kind of timetable or something on this? I mean, what is, you must have discussed this with the owners as far as what's going to work. You know, phasing times, timetables, are you looking to do the whole project at once? Are you looking to possibly do an east wing or a south wing and then move on? Or is there that strategy not thought of yet?
Right. Now, we did talk about briefly and they, at least right now, are talking about building the whole thing rather than phasing it. Because there's obviously advantage to mobilizing and sort of dealing with this and also not dealing with situation where there's construction and there is also tenants. I mean, that's kind of potentially a mess. So the idea, the hope is to do the whole thing at once. So it's like a single phase.
Yeah. And, and I'm not sure that I've shared any of the discussions that you had with, with Brent Cross as far as water and sewer. I'm sure you, you started to look into, I know you started to look into the sewer units and as far as where the actual supply of water is going to be coming from. What's, do, do either you or Brett have anything you want to share with the planning board of that?
Well, I had a chat with Brent and he sent, I think, a follow-up email to, I think to the mayor and to you, Mike, right? And I guess, well, I will let Brent voice it rather than.
So, yeah, this topic is timely because as we know, we also have, well, we just talked about beers and we know that the Uptown, I've forgotten the name of the project, but the Uptown project is also kind of knocking on the door to ask the sewer questions. So about a year ago, due to some stresses on the sewer plant due to extraordinary high, high flows from what we call INI. We kind of, we did sort of an informal temporary moratorium with the idea that we knew that the INI would go, would subside. But that coming out of that, the plant needs to have somewhat of a look into the future and we, the, the plant asked each of the towns and villages to give us a, like a five-year, you know, look out into the future and, you know, kind of come up with a number that they would anticipate. And I can say that at least from firsthand knowledge that beer project and the Uptown Road project were known as potential entities at the time. This project wasn't yet, hadn't yet come forward to the point that we were aware of it. I've actually need to, to initiate a conversation with each of the towns, but more specifically the village of Lansing. Because I think that if you, if all of the projects that are coming forward happen, are, are able to come to fruition. I don't know that we've contemplated enough units for everybody. But that it's usually not the case that every single project that gets proposed comes, makes it all the way to the end. And so, you know, I think Mike Scott's question would be helpful to know more. Alex, if you have a, a year in which you think that you would be hoping to see construction so that we can kind of take a look at that and factor it in. And because part of the problem with this is that who's going to come to the plate and buy sewer units first? And right at the moment, there's, there's no, there's no stress on the system. But when you take a look at eighty-four units for beer and a hundred and fifty to seventy-five for Uptown, and I think you just mentioned maybe two, two fifty or something for this one, that's, that's a, any one of those projects is almost the biggest project ever. Right now, the, the big. Right now, the, the biggest project ever was East Point. And that was twice as big as the previous biggest ever, which was you, Cuba View?
Cuba View, yeah.
And so these are some very major projects in, in the history of the sewer plant. So I think it's, I'm not here to, to sound an alarm, but I'm just here to, you know, let everybody know that it's not completely an open, an open book. Like we can just take, you know, 250 here and 150 there and 175. There's some over in the town of Ithaca that's on, on the planning board too. Now, we, we don't co-mingle, we don't, we don't, we don't try to, to limit, you know, one town from how much development happens in another town. But the reality is, is that there, there's a lot, a lot going on. And it would be probably wise for everybody that we kind of take a, take some time here in the very near future to, to look at that and, and be able to, to respond to Alex in a more, more affirmative way than just to say that, you know, maybe it's not a problem, maybe it is a problem.
Well, when we spoke, you said it's a kind of first come, first served sort of thing potentially.
It is. I mean, theoretically, the, the village of Lansing has enough units right now to cover this project. And, you know, if you come, get there first and you, you buy those units from the village, you, you're, you're the first come, first served. I just don't know what the village of Lansing wants to do in terms of, you know, if, I'm, I'm assuming that there's probably going to be a, a need to request more units than what was requested a year ago. How to, how that's going to, you know, how that's going to play out, I can't say. But you, you are correct. That was my statement to you is right now, the village of Lansing has X number of units. And it's, as far as the village of Cuba Heights is concerned, it's, you know, it's up to the village of Lansing to decide who gets those or how, how those get distributed.
And I, so right, I think a piece of that too is, you know, is, is the village, you know, whether that's the planning board or the trustees, you know, again, doing what's best for the village. So making sure that, you know, there is, you know, access to the sewer units so that development is fair for all, for, for, you know, all development.
Of course.
Maybe, you know, we say, no, 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 that's enough development in the village of Lansing, please don't do anymore. But doesn't seem like we're at that point.
Well, as a, as a kind of, as, as an argument that is made in that presentation in front of you, but just to kind of underscore the idea that the point of this project to me, and well, to developers as well, that there's an existing building that otherwise would be kind of completely erased, demolished or abandoned potentially, becomes something else, which is, there is a kind of, sort of a nationwide debate about like how to live in this sort of post-industrial world that we are. And this is, this in a way puts the village of Lansing in a kind of a pioneering position because there's not a lot of this is being done. So again, so obviously there are a lot of projects out there, but this in a way is a kind of unique one, at least for this area. So that's something else to keep in mind.
Hey, Mike, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to let the planning board know that, because, because this is, it is a question that's been asked. Someone just can't come in and buy 600 units.
Right.
I was going to ask.
What, what, what they have to have, they have to have an approved site plan. When they have to have some type of shooting solution as far as how, where the connections are, where it's going and all that. So just to let you know that someone can't just come in and monopolize the whole thing. And then it just doesn't happen like that.
Mike, is, as I look at some of the things that are necessarily, excuse me, necessary for, before we even move into the developers' conference, when we had a very similar discussion at East Point, there's one primary entrance exit, but there's also a crash gate. Is, are they going to have to have something similar here?
That's something I'm going to have to figure out, sit down, take a look and figure whether there needs to be two points of egress or ingress.
Right.
I also note that I believe there's a number of items under sub two, A2, that are missing from this proposal before we can deem it a complete proposal. Off the top of my head, an expected timeline and phasing for the development, the manner in which the phasing of development will be controlled. Type performance.
There's a letter provided to that effect to Mike. I think, I mean, I know if you don't have it, I can probably pull it up right now.
No, I, I have a, I have a letter that I will send out after this meeting when we start gathering some other information that way. Because I figure we're going to, I mean, you got a good point, Natalie. I, I figure we're going to, you know, come back with some questions and whatnot, you know, after, and ask you for some other information also, Alex, so that, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be a session here too before we get to this developers' conference. Not to cut you off, Natalie, but you're absolutely right.
No, that was it. That was all my point.
No, I think I started, started down that road too. So, other questions or comments from anyone on board? Jim, did you have any, anything you wanted to share or ask?
Oh, I thought this, this was very interesting. I have no question at this time.
Okay, Brent?
So one thing that I don't know got discussed, I, I did not attend the trustee meeting. But one thing that would seem to be anticipated as a requirement would be some kind of a traffic study. And, you know, we kind of know there's some strains on the intersection at Beaumax and Warren. And I don't know if those are probably or possibly mitigated with some kind of traffic signal improvement or change. But there could be a lot of trip generation through those intersections. As well as, I think that probably you can anticipate that you'll get a, a fair number of folks who reside in the Lansing Trails development to come to some meetings and, and raise their concerns about short cutting of traffic down through, you know, Lansing Trails direction. I can say that, that I've been around quite a while and I've heard those, those kinds of comments before, but not, never when there was 250, you know, units to talk about. This, this kind of dwarfs anything that we've ever, that I think is, I don't think there's an, an engineering study that has ever contemplated anything within an order of magnitude of this. So I think that it's probably quite a, quite a substantial element that, that the developer should expect to undertake.
Yeah, and we've done that with other, we've done that with other developments too. We've required traffic studies. So, yeah, I, I think that's, you know, hey, you're right, this is larger than those. But I think it's a pretty standard practice for, you know, anything that's a decent size to, to have a traffic study done.
Yep.
I think David has been raising.
Oh, yeah, sorry, David.
I mean, I'd like to bring up sewer units again, since every, since so many people are present that are involved in that. Just if you could, maybe Brent or Mike could put numbers to, how many available sewer units are there right now? And, you know, we're discussing two of these and three different developments that are in the pipeline. You know, the need for 500 sewer units. Is 500 a number that's attainable, Brent, or not?
I would, I would say, not to cut you off, Brent and David, but I would say that let's take that discussion offline. I don't want to, I know it's, it's not, not specific to his presentation. It is, and that question has come up before too, definitely. So you are not the first to ask. But I think, you know, Brent and Mike can, if you can share some information with David, I don't know exactly what's available. But, and also Alex, obviously, or, or anybody who asks it, I think it would be good information to, you know, especially even for the trustees to start thinking about if, you know, the village is going to have to make some sort of pivot or adjustment in the future. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yep. Yeah. And, and this isn't unique to this project, right? Every time, I mean, there's been some smaller things that have come up, much smaller, where, you know, we always say, hey, just so you know, sewer units, you know, could be an issue at some point. So as, as proposals come forward.
In the past, I think that slowed down all sorts of things over in that area was the sewer moratorium where the Northwoods, that whole, a few of Aubrey Edelman's at the time. So, yeah, it's a big deal. But I was, I think Mike answered my, I had a question about, well, can, I, could I just waltz in and buy 250 units? Because I happen to have the money right now. No, you have to have a site plan and, and things have to be in place first.
The site plan, the site plan, Mike, has to be an approved site plan?
Yes.
You just made reference to, you know, sewer units being issued from the village's point of view for the best interests of the village. But that seems to, you know, make things very subjective. And, and, you know, it's, that makes it difficult for any developer to see where things are going. And especially if you're, you're almost, you know, the village will end up pitting us against one another.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't think, that wasn't how I understood that comment, you know, mine was, my understanding of it is, you know, it's the village's responsibility to make sure there are enough sewer units available for the development that people want to do in the village. And if there aren't enough, to make sure that that's, you know, clear upfront and not just say, yep, your site plan's approved, only to have, right, so you turn around and say, oh, except sorry, you can't get sewer units, so you can't move forward. So I think it's the responsibility, not to, not to pit people against each other. It's the responsibility of the village to make sure that, you know, as we're moving forward on projects, that, that doesn't happen to you or Alex or Uptown or whoever that's, whoever wants to come in, whether it's, you know, a two-unit house or a 250-unit, you know, place.
I've just heard of this issue for years now. And it'd be great if the village, you know, had a plan to accommodate development in the village.
This is, this is, this is a different topic now we're on.
Sure, yeah. Yeah. So let's, again, let's, we can get back on topic with the, with the proposal here. But so other, other questions or comments that anybody wants to ask Alex, so we've got them here?
Well, it's pretty preliminary and there's a lot of work to be done yet. But I'm glad that you brought up the traffic study is not unimportant.
And I think, you know, as, as, as we look back, I think the most recent, most recent development just happens to be right, right next door. So I know there's, you know, there were quite a bit of things that we, you know, discussed as part of East Point. I think a lot of, a lot of that may be already addressed or thought of here, but definitely some things that we want to make sure that we're, we're sticking points there. As we went through and had to discuss over and over again, maybe we can get out ahead of them here, you know, as the planning board to make sure that, you know, those questions are all laid out.
Other than that, I think there's the usual sidewalk, tree, our various codes that I trust are being taken.
Trees, lighting, sidewalks, all that.
But especially the tree and sidewalk code, I think are important.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe they'd be, would they be able to run a sidewalk all the way down Beaumax and connect to the east side?
Hook up to the one at East Point.
So that. I would think so.
Yeah, you would.
But.
I'm not familiar with the area.
Oh.
Get there when we get there.
Yeah, we have a whole sidewalk that runs all the way down. And I'm not sure who owns that. Does East Point own that sidewalk?
Yes.
And it stops before you get to the first condo, which never made sense and it's.
Well, I know, but there's a reason, I've asked, it's some sort of water thing. There was some sort of little contest going on about that. But yes, I was suggesting that, well, let's somebody just take the darn thing before somebody gets hurt. But I believe the East Point one runs the whole of their property. So that it makes sense that this one would just hook up to that and take you out to Warren. Would be great.
Okay. Oh, Mike?
No, I was just going to say that if, if there are, if there aren't any other questions or whatnot, what I can do is come up with a checklist for this preliminary proposal and get that over to the planning board members. And also I'll put on there my comments as far as whether I think Alex has addressed that so that you have a topic for next meeting. Basically, you just look over that checklist. If there's something that you still need or something you're still requiring, then, you know, we can, we can, we can move on to the November meeting or we might actually go to the November meeting, get a developers' conference if you get everything that you're looking for.
That'd be great.
Okay. Well, Alex, thanks. Like Mike said, he'll be in touch to, with you and with the planning board too. Let's next steps move forward.
All right. Thank you. Looking forward to your comments.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the solar array draft law. So I, this will be short. Yeah, no, so.
No, we haven't.
I know that there were some updates to the permit that the village has come up with. I took a lot of the comments that we had from the previous meeting where I, I had to have Natalie go back and transcribe some of her, decipher some of her handwriting. Mine's just as bad, by the way. Some of it I could understand though. So she got all that back. I made some additional comments after the last meeting. I sent that to her. She made some additional comments on some of the things that I commented on. So I'm going to get them all organized. And this meeting was going to be busy anyway, so I didn't, I didn't want to spend a whole ton of time on it other than to give an update. But I will get them all compiled and I just want to look back over her questions and comments. And we'll get that out to, if we have time, discuss it the next meeting.
All the application ready then too?
Yes, yes.
So, oh, we're not going to do the application? We're going to do all?
If you have questions about the application, we can spend a couple of minutes on.
So are you going to send us the one, well, what did we end up with for all the changes? We haven't seen anything, right? Okay. All right.
Good? Okay. Next item on the agenda, which I just lost, is the trustee reporter.
Well, guess what?
They can't.
No trustee. In September. I don't, lack of agenda, I, I could come up with a few myself, I think, but anyway. Nevertheless, I'm having to report.
That was easy. October. Who has October?
May not be necessary. Who knows?
I think it's me. Hold on. It's me. There you go. Hey, if you guys want to cancel October 2nd to 16th, it's, no, I'm just joking.
It's true to holidays.
And then after that is Lorraine in November and Pat's got December. So. Next item on the agenda is other business.
Oh, I did have a question about the Uptown Road. Is that considered the town of Ithaca or is that in the? Oh, it's in the village? Okay. I saw the, just saw the other night, Brian Crandall posted a bunch of stuff. It was for the Cornell, Cornell Real Estate Department. And I think it was their planning document for what, 2023 or something?
You know, it's been two years now already, coming up to.
Yeah, but there is a development that they are talking about that's in the town. It's at the end of Arrowhead. It's behind Sapsucker Woods.
Oh, is that, that's on the other side? Oh, so it's two different things?
Uptown is correct. Near the swim club.
Right, right. That's us. Right. But are they talking about over past Brentwood, behind there?
When you get into Health and Imbressor area, if you go down that way.
Yes.
You go down, you make that.
Straight ahead.
And land back in there is in the town of Ithaca and it's behind Sapsucker Woods. That's what the town of Ithaca are talking about. Development there.
I didn't know, but they were saying that there was, there were some comments. Where was that? In the voice or somewhere?
I think.
About water and, you know, high water table and all this stuff.
Well, they're talking, they're talking to us. We're involved in it because they would have to use the village of Lansing's.
To access it.
Sewer.
Oh.
It's possible they would have to use it because we're not sure the capacity for them to go to that point right down through Cuba Heights, there's too much of a capacity at that point. I mean, this is all preliminary stuff. So they would have to come down through Arrowhead, down through Uptown and connect into Cuba Heights at that point.
Wow.
So.
So the thing is, the Uptown, how far along are they? I mean, we just, you know, they, they came, they, we, we changed the zoning because it had flip flopped from high to low to medium to, so we basically brought it back to where it was originally about 40, 50 years ago.
months or so.
Okay.
Uh, Stephen Furr has reached out, uh, I mean, we've, the mayor and myself and John have had some meetings.
Okay.
He's, he's met with Natalie, uh, at least once, I know of, for questions.
Just once, just once.
And, and so I think they're getting, just getting ready to come to the planning board at some point.
Um, anything else, or?
Oh, yeah, looks like Cuba Medical's starting to do their move and move places into the new building, I just got a notice today, over here on Craft Road, they're, one of their buildings that they have, um, the whole women's health section is moving on October ninth.
Into the mall?
No, down to the.
Oh, down to.
By Green Star, yeah, the big building, um, and there's, um, they also listed the other places that are moving in, but they aren't any, um, offices that are already up here on the hill, but that means that that will only leave, um, one Cuba Medical, the blood workplace, left in that building, and the rest of the building's going to be empty.
Over here on Craft Road, you mean?
Yeah. Which I'm disappointed, because it was so quick.
New renovation about four years ago.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So there's, the lab is there.
The lab is still there, yeah, so far, so convenient, you know?
It is, I'm kidding.
You know, it's so easy to go down there for doctors, I mean, it takes me two minutes, you know, now it's going to be. And that parking lot downtown is not big enough to house all the offices that are going in that building.
Talk to somebody.
I mean. Not our jurisdiction.
Not our jurisdiction.
Jim, anything for you?
No, I, I don't have anything, um, other than an off-topic, is the community corners, Cuyuga Medical Facility going to remain? I mean, they just built that a couple of years ago.
Yes.
I think that's staying, yeah, I don't think they're combining that with anything.
Oh, I don't know.
There's a lab there, you know?
Oh, I didn't know that.
There was, there was something in the article when they, when they were doing the mall, somebody specifically asked about that, and I thought that it was, they said, nope, that's all staying, it was more of the smaller ones that they were combining, you know, to the downtown or potentially this location, that one's pretty big there, yeah, and again, it's the same sort of thing, they just built that whole thing one, um, four, four, five years ago, maybe it was longer than that, it was track of time.
Right, I remember that.
Okay, um, Yemila, anything for you? Nope. Okay.
So.
I knew you had something, I was saving for last.
I wanted to ask again about the thing where they're replacing over, um, Lansing Trails Two, so in front of the, the very first townhouses that were built, they put in, so that's where they would extend and tie into the Millcroft.
Yeah.
So, you have, but they haven't pulled any, that plan has been in the works forever, so what would be the next step? Did they come to you for a building permit?
Yeah, I mean.
Is that how it works? It's so, I mean, they've had the plan forever.
Yeah, I'm sure that they'll come, I, I, I would think that they would come back just to review the site plan.
Yeah.
Lansing Trails Three, if it was going to happen.
Yeah, okay.
Just to make sure that all, you know, everything, all the circumstances are the same in that area, um, but I have not heard anything about.
Anything.
That I'm wanting to do.
Okay.
They still have a little more work to do down.
Yeah, they've got one, more building going up, that they just started, probably when that's done, they'll, they'll start moving.
They started the four unit, and they pour into foundation, and they have a lab port now, so they're going to work on that through the winter, and they only have room for another three unit, and that's it.
Yep, and that, because that piece of property by the pond there is actually a single-family home, that they're not going to develop that.
I'm surprised that they didn't buy that piece on the corner.
Well, they did, then they sold it, oh, that was theirs, yeah, so was the one, I happen to know, because I bought the piece of property right across from it, which is also a single-family, uh, property.
Oh.
So that one, the one, one twenty-one, and then the one right across it, the one by the pond, those were both single families.
Ah.
There's a, it's a retention.
It's a retention on, like.
It's back there.
Oh, it's back on the backside, right?
Yeah, if you, if you just walk in a little bit, you'll look down and see.
It's a village home, Stormwater Pond, yeah.
Oh.
With fish.
Anything else that we should know about?
Pretty much everything we've been talking about came to this meeting.
Feel like that fortune teller, uh, that fortune teller thing.
At this point, we don't need anything.
I was going to say, so, no, I just was wondering, is there anything else we should be thinking about? Okay.
Um, Lisa had asked about the meeting on the thirty-first.
Doesn't sound like we'll need it, for sure.
Yeah, I would encourage us to, I will not either, um, I know there's some other people who prefer to not be.
Natalie either.
Is everyone planning on being here for the, um, meeting on the ninth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, I might not be, or I might be on Zoom, um, so, but I'll let people know as it gets closer, we'll see, uh, we'll see.
Okay.
Uh, I don't think I, oh, it is September, remember, um, I'm sure Jody, I know, I'm sure Jody will send us a reminder, yeah, please, uh, I've been, I don't know how much detail people are putting, but I haven't been putting a lot in their others, and like.
Review this and that.
Email, document, review. Decipher handwriting, I did not put that in there, but.
About three or four hours for it.
So stuff like that, yeah, then I gave up, no, um, I gave up pretty quick. Um, I think that's it, so, yeah, just make sure that you have that updated, I don't know if, I assume Jody will want it at the beginning of, uh.
October.
October, also.
Which is next week.
Which is next week, yes. Also, um, the, I know it's odd to say, but the year is winding down, so, um, make sure that, um, you've got your, for lack of a better term, continuing education credits in for, uh.
I have no idea.
Um, for this, there's a, there's a, you know, there's a ton of them, the New York Planning Federation puts on a monthly one, the Learn at Lunch series, I went to one, uh, last week that was actually pretty good, it was about, um, what was the actual?
Door term rentals?
No, it was, what was the actual, um, I don't know, that's the one from Drew, that's not what I'm looking for.
What, the pro housing one that Drew?
I know which one, because I was.
It was the solar, um, no, it wasn't solar, it was, hang on a second, I forget, I'll find it out while.
I was so, I can't remember.
I have nothing much more.
I was so, it was.
Oh, that was great.
Was it cold?
No. It was the water, what was it?
Yes, thank you, that's the one.
You know what, I got interrupted so many times while I was trying to listen to that, I just said, forget it, I'm not even gonna, just gonna get back to work, because I have too many interruptions.
Yeah, it was the, um, it was the Climate Action Plan, is what it was called, but it was about, um, flooding, um, and how they kind of overcame that, and grants and what they did, it was, it was really interesting, especially like, you know, here's what we ended up with, here's all the other things that, um, you know, we considered, and yes, this was more expensive upfront, but then they talked about grants, but in the long run, and how, just a lot of, even like, even down to like some of the landscaping around it, and some of the requirements that the state imposed on accessing those funds, and all the way down to like, you know, here's what this looks like, it's flood-resistant, you know, vegetation, there's a fence around it for five years, so people stay off of it, but one, after that, it's gone, and how they kind of mixed like, you know, you know, larger stones with like, nice kind of preformed blocks, so people could still be near the water and enjoy it, but not get down onto, you know, onto those kind of rocks, it was really interesting, and they had to raise the elevation of it like a few feet just